Yeah, that was sort of the thing with the Terry Hills Country Club in the day.
And why do we not want for the pool?
In DC?
Yeah.
We had a lot of discussion about it and then we finally made a motion that the golf course, Senator run the golf course, but then when we made the motion it was this golf course in the pool limbo always. We were inclusive in that and we voted on everything. And then, you know, I guess when the might would revise, or when it was typed up, the motion was typed up, I think it's for a second reading or something, it was to the golf course.
All right. Well, that's how we got there. Is that what we want to keep? Okay. And is the existing zoning of that parcel is?
Go to.
No.
Oh, existing is R1.
It's all R1.
Yes.
Except it's B3.
Tiny little piece right there.
This is B3.
The other end of, and if you look on your map, that's why I gave it to you in color, the red outlines the B3. The B3 just happens to be split between two modules there.
The village owned property and the Johnny's own property.
Yeah, this is, this is village property, that's Johnny's property.
Okay.
So the little Johnny's piece will remain in B3. Actually, that would go in village center.
Well, that would be C, our little piece would remain B3, which will be the only B3 piece in the, in the community, right? It's B3, we've been in our codes now, to the new code. So I, I think the.
I thought we were going to keep the description.
Professional business district. B3.
Is it, yeah.
I'm used to get used to this.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think we'll have to amend it because I don't believe so.
Chapter 14.
All right, fine. But I want us to have something for the following. I'd hate to have something on the map. Definition map. All right.
Can everybody support this?
Council members?
Well, majority. We voted on it.
We voted on it.
Yeah. I know, I mean, I think what's important now though is do we all like?
What, I understand.
The question is, is every?
We're going to have a vote at some point.
To, to, yeah, to adopt this map.
Right.
And are we going to have any argument about it or are we, everybody's happy with it?
Happy is the word, but I guess I live with it.
It's not yours.
Yeah. I'm okay with it.
There's, at least it sounds like there's three or four affirmative votes for this map since it's been presented tonight. Okay?
Stick a fork in it. Move on, please.
All right, will do. Now to the code itself, and I have some general comments. Actually, you know, this document, we've been working on it now for a little over two years, starting with the planification and then moving to council and, you know, during that time you've taken a lot of public comment from it. I, you know, I would consider what we've got available to do, small number of comments come forward about it, but, you know, both, both bodies, planning commission and council have made changes to the text as, as you felt was appropriate based on the comments that you received. I, I guess, you know, I just want to say that the zoning code is a complex document. It is also very much a legal document that you always have to be mindful of and it's certainly something if you don't work with it on a daily basis can be confusing and once it's, it's how it's interpreted, that's the important thing. I can say our existing code is deficient in a number of ways and this process started with planning commission asked the consultant to put together a list of deficiencies and how they needed to be addressed. So while it wasn't an extensive list, those, those were addressed. The booklet was reconfigured, a number of those loose items were all put together into one, one chapter, which is now incorporated in one place, which is definitely more user friendly when you're looking for, looking for things rather than searching in a number of different places to see where you can find pieces is or out all nicely consolidated. I really could go on and on about the deficiency for our current code, but I, I think that's really not appropriate right now unless you had some specific questions.
No, I just want to interject two thoughts. One, when you side by side some of this, if you're going back and looking at stuff and you look at the old and the new, it is like light years ahead of where we were as far as ease of readability and relevance to today's environment versus when the code was originally written and revised. So that's one point. And without going into specifics, because I don't want to, there are instances that are affecting us right now that have the potential for somebody doing something in this village that is not congruent with the spirit of what we're trying to do and build here. And if we don't get this code passed sooner rather than later, we're going to end up with things that are outside the code that are existing use things that we are not covered on.
That's very accurate. That's very accurate.
Well, just to update you on the last meeting, we tried to pass this on the last meeting and could not get a second. I wound up running the meeting in a second, a second vote just to get the discussion going and find out where we were so we could maybe put some of this stuff to bed.
Right.
Seemed to center around use of OLR, how that would be impacted, nonconforming and nonconforming. There was a piece of property, I guess over near where Terry lives, that was discussed. That's, what was the issue on that, Terry?
You included a piece of private property.
It's what?
Piece of private property was included in the designation of the PUD section.
And, and that's apparently an error in the zoning map that occurred a number of years ago and something needs to be corrected.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's, it's not part of what we're doing. We're, we're not amending that right now.
Well, it doesn't have anything to do with the zoning code.
That's a mistake that was made in, no, that's.
Or the zoning map, it doesn't affect the zoning map.
Is it correct then?
It's, it's an error that was made, you, that was not part of your designated PUD, but when the zoning map was made, it is shaded as PUD, so that needs to be corrected. You don't need to take any action on that.
Okay, so that's a different map.
Nor is that part of what we're doing.
That's a PUD.
Correct. The whole version here is this.
I, I watched the meeting. I'm not, if somebody wasn't comfortable voting for something and we need to go back and work a couple of issues, I have no problem with that, but I'm just saying that there are things that are happening in our community because we have an outdated code, we could very easily end up with situations that we don't want.
Well, our intention at the end of the meeting was we postponed the vote and go to the next regular session and, and be the point of having everybody ready to get this put to bed today.
Very well. All right.
Yep, since you did, Anna, I'd really like to address some of the more recent comments that we've heard. So you have, you know, ask me questions, we'll take a look at it. If you have the copies of the code, I can reference the current section and most often the proposed section for you. One of them that we heard about involves density. There was a recommendation of the current density under the R2 is, this is section, it's on page 74, section 11.4. And it was a concern that it says maximum density for multi, multiple family dwelling unit development shall not exceed 14.52 dwelling units per acre. That is the same as we use in our current code. Our current code does not specifically say maximum density, it doesn't, but it's the same intention and why it may double if it said, because I'm used to nipping that in this case it was 3,000. You always look at what could get the most, in this case, units, multifamily units on the property, which is the multifamily. If you're looking at that at 11.5A, multifamily shall have a minimum lot area of not less than 3,000 per unit. It's a way of measuring and coming up with the number of units that you can put on whatever size piece of property you have. So the fact that it didn't say it in our code previously or currently, our current code, it was still the same as.
What does the current code say?
Current code says, and section 1135, take a look at that. Section 1135 of five, page 49 of the current, current code, if you have your notebook, says three more family dwellings, 3,000 square feet per family.
So my memory serves me, an acre is about 43,000.
45,000.
Okay, I got my fraction of a foot wrong. Well, I didn't use it, I rounded it. Divided by 3,000, it's 14.42. So, there's no change. This is no change from the previous code.
Right.
Okay.
And the recommendation was to reduce it to 10. You know, personally, I feel that that changes the pattern of how we develop, so I, I don't know why we want to reduce it per acre. The next item is.
Should we take these one at a time from the bed or do you want to go through the whole thing?
Oh, I, I'm, I'm just trying to provide clarification. I don't know if you're.
Well.
You can't really vote anything.
Well, is that, I mean, you know, is, what's the objection to that 14.52?
I think, I think all it is saying is if there's any, you know, asking if there's any comments after each section, might make sense.
Well, okay, that's, that's the question I just asked.
My comment, my comment is that they recommend 14.52, that's good enough for me.
And that's what it is right now.
That's what it is. That's the current, that's the current's number just expressed in different units.
When I asked the question, they, they thought Kinsky said it was 10 of the old one.
No.
He corrected me that way, was he wrong then?
Yes, he was. The old code is sitting right here.
Right.
She just showed it to us and it's that same, 3,000 square feet per dwelling.
It's just stated a different way though.
Yeah, it's just, you know, square feet per unit or units per square acre, it's just the end.
Was there, I remember we were talking about depending on, was calculating on the small, it's best to take the worst case scenario, right?
Because that's the maximum amount you could get, yes.
Well, let me, if I can make a general comment, just, I look at my responsibility and, you know, each of us have to look at our own responsibility and just be, feel free to ask questions at this stage of the game. It's not to slight the work that's been done or anything like that. I feel it's also my responsibility to, when I hear comments, to do what I can to investigate those comments. I know it seems, might seem like backpedaling at this stage of the game. I had enough comments to warrant some question and I think that Yvonne and Yulsi has done, you know, quite a bit of work on addressing those. But I think I'd be falling short and that's why, one reason I think that the meeting went the way it did last time. So, it, it, to me, it's never too late to make an adjustment, especially when we're talking about bigger picture things and I understand there's a lot of minor things that won't, we're going to make adjustments, hopefully even after this goes through, well, we'll make adjustments then. But I feel it's very important that we do what we've been doing and I just hope that the patience hangs in there with us as we ask some questions and that's what we did in the last meeting.
Okay. Got a comment on 14.52 versus 10?
Well, that's the kind of stuff I just don't appreciate because I'm just trying to express my vantage point.
Okay, well.
And, you know, and, and to move me along, I think is, is rude. I, I, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to steal the show.
Jeff, no, Jeff. The, you know, the question was brought up, do we deal with each of these issues as they're brought up? This got brought up, the facts were presented and, but it started off, David said something and now it's your turn to say something. This is the question on the floor. Appreciate the preamble and I appreciate your diligence and your willingness to, you know, dig in and understand, but, you know, there's, there's sort of a question.
There is a couple other preambles before this.
Okay, go.
So I didn't have a chance to get my preamble. I have no question on this.
Well, I, I do have a little problem with this. I've been following very close the proceedings on the green township and what is going on in there. And I wanted to do a little bit more investigating on that. They're having a lot of problems with the.
Green township, where?
Green township.
Green township?
Yes.
Okay.
I've talked a little bit with Mr. Chabert and Mr. Terhar about that. There seems like there's a lot of unrest with the people there with the housing that they are putting in there and it seems like it's very compacted. And I would like to do some research myself prior to the next meeting, I'm just announcing that.
See, I just, for me, I, I've said it several times, but I look at this more, because let's look towards the positive things and not, it's always going to turn toward negative things.
Well, we have to be ready for whatever.
I know, but my thought is one of the hottest things right now just because of aging population by their senior centers and stuff like that. And, you know, this would be a long debate, but if a developer wanted to come and bring some type of senior center that had multiple rooms or dwellings and you wanted to maximize something, that would be, I mean, that might be a great thing for the village. I mean, I don't, I don't think altogether that if this number, 14.5, is higher than what, what you or someone else might think is cramped or something, there, there might be a very positive outcome that comes from that. And it is our current code and I'm, I'm assuming that's probably what the code is for most communities around us. Is that right?
It's probably more would be my guess, but it's consistent with what we've had.
Mine is, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I just want to say that I, I took a quick look like at our apartments over on Cromwell and actually there, we have eight units on a half acre, which is more dense than this, which were built, is where some of our original buildings. We also, the other building is on 0.37 of an acre and there's eight units in there as well. So we were actually built out of an even higher density. So this is lower and 10 would certainly be very low, but I thought that was interesting.
My, my concern is, is if one of these burns down, you can't put it back.
Yeah.
And does that change the fabric of our community?
To get on track with.
Yeah, well, sure.
The way I understand the density question, I'm fine with the way it is. That's my.
Maria's got reservations. Glenn is. I'm fine. Greg is.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Let's move to the next one.
Okay, we had a number of comments regarding exclusions in the new code for single family and duplexes, but not multifamily that are individually owned. Stated that there was a growing burden on the row townhouses, multifamily owners have to get variances for driveways, particularly because multifamily can't have driveways in front yards if they're going to be doing building additions, they must also add two additional parking places. I want to clarify for you that, first of all, our, our townhouses are not multifamily and in fact, the new code, unlike our current code, the new code actually provides us now with a definition of townhouses and thus identifies specifically as a single family unit. You can find that in the definitions section, which is in chapter two, I do believe. I'll get the page for you. It's on page 19. An attached privately owned, single family dwelling unit which is part of and adjacent to other similarly owned, single family dwelling units that are connected to but separate from one another by a common pretty well-heaving doors windows or other provisions for being casted. So I think that will address a lot of the issues pertaining to that, those same exclusions for single family would also apply to our townhouses. Regarding the driveways, section 20.1C on page 132 does permit driveways for single family homes. So again, because townhouses do qualify as single family, that would be permissible. I, I couldn't see, I could not locate a specific, for two additional parking places on an addition. There is required for two for each housing unit, but if, if in doing an addition, additional parking places are required, that would probably be a perfect instance for a variance. I don't think this happens often. I drove the village to see how many instances we had of this and I think I just learned of one today and that was it. So I'm, I'm not sure. Doesn't sound like a big issue, but it certainly is one that can be handled through a variance if additional parking spaces are required.
I have no, page was that?
Um, it's for the park driveways, page 132, section 21C.
Concerns on this issue?
Nope.
Okay, ready?
I heard a couple of members.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Also a concern that perhaps we are, the new code has larger setbacks being required for residential. I believe if you look at the R2, R1 and R2 and compare them, you will find that in every instance they're either the same or smaller with only one exception and that was in the R2 zone for front yard setbacks for other uses. And I will refer you to page, actually we have both because you can take a look at, you go to both the R1 and the R2 sections and the new one, it's page, starts on page 70. You will, I can run through some of these for you. For example.
What section is that?
Page.
70.
Page 76, 10, yeah, I'll start with 10.4.
10.4, okay.
The lot area and width, those stay the same, minimum front yard requirements stay the same, minimum side yard, A, single family have a minimum side yard setback of not less than five feet, currently eight, so that's actually three feet small than what we currently have. Residential accessory structures right under that should have a minimum side yard setback of less than three feet. Our code currently didn't specify anything for that, but I can tell you we certainly need it because that's probably the most common issue that we have come over our desk is that side yard setback for the accessory structures. All other uses should have a minimum side yard setback of not less than 15 feet per side. That's the same as, as it is currently. The next one down, 10.7, the rear yard setback, single family detached dwellings have a minimum rear yard setback of not less than 30 feet. This is a good example is the C on the next page. Our code normally bases that on a percentage where you, you have to look at lot dimensions, current lot dimensions and truly the only way to accurately determine what that percentage would be would be to get a survey from the property owner that shows you specifically what their measurements are and then take that percentage to arrive at what those setbacks would be. So that's not really realistic to do for every issue or for every resident to be able to either have, produce a survey or have a survey. So probably a lot of guessing work over the years on what, what those dimensions might be, so I think we're much better off.
Isn't that highly unusual to, you know?
I've never seen anything like that, no. I've never seen anything like that before. So I think we're much better off having some specific footage there and again, the choices that were made were based on what we currently see out in the community.
Come on, what would, I'm either hitting a metal block or I've never seen this before and it's kind of clucking for me. What would the other uses be, like in sections?
Oh, other uses are, hold on a second, Fred. For, for that, for an example in the R1, other uses would fall under anything that's not, you know, the principally permitted.
So be permitted.
The other uses like type E, satellite issues, signs.
Okay.
Worship, educational, no occupations, private recreation, not no occupations, that has to be in bed and breakfast, any of those.
Like a pool, a pool that would be perhaps in the side yard would have to be setback, that'd be another use and that would have to be 15 feet setback as opposed to a three foot setback.
Right, well, you look at side and rear.
Yeah, but I mean, we were talking about that side yard setback and I think that was the question in the other use.
Yeah.
Instead of a pool would be an example of other use. It would have to be 15 and not rear.
Right, yeah.
Got it.
Sorry.
All right.
R2 is the same thing. If you want me to run through them, I can tell you where the differences are again. That's.
Section 11.4.
Sorry, page 74, yeah, 11.4 we talked about, 11.5, again on the minimum lot area and width, those are all the same, minimum front yard setback, okay. The A, B and C, there are multifamily, two family and single family, currently 30, the proposed is to be 20, so those are actually 10 feet less.
Which actually fits a lot of the existing structures in the, but again, as I recall when they, they, we chose this number when in essentially a survey of a, a number of selected properties that appear closer than 30 feet. So, so this on.
Right, was not arbitrary, yeah, based on data. And again, the all other have a front yard setback of, this one is, this is the one larger one, 50 feet, which currently is 35. So that is a little bit yard, front yard for other uses. And those would be like worship, educational, homeless, care facilities.
That was an exception.
Yes. Minimum yard, side yard setbacks, again, I think those are all, I noted those were the same. Minimum rear yard setbacks, 11.8, I'm on that right now. Those are also currently percentage based, so we attached actual feet to those. Three five for each with the accessory structures at three feet. Okay, any questions on those? Okay.
Okay, is that, is that the end of the questions about the setbacks? Okay, does anybody have any questions, concerns, is there a lack of support for the current language for setbacks?
No. Just fine.
Okay. A concern was raised that the statement that planning commission is able to meet without public notice in your new book, in your new code, that would look at section 22.6D.
Oh, page 163.
And that's on page 166.
166?
I believe this was the reference and it's talking about action by planning commission for site plan review, which is a specific task assigned to planning commission. And just partway down the first paragraph you'll see it says, "No public notice or public hearing shall be required in conjunction with the review, the approval, approval of modifications or disapproval of site plan." You know, what this, this does not mean a planning commission can have a meeting without public notice. What it means is that they can have their, they do not have to specifically notice the fact that they're doing a site plan review. It, it, this, this will be a routine task of them under the new code, that they do site plan reviews and, and that is something I really like about this code. This code spells out when they're going to do the site plan reviews and actually provides the criteria that will be used when they're doing the site plan reviews. A little aside there. But what that line means is that that's, they don't have to have a separate public hearing or separate public thing just just because you're reviewing a specific site plan. Does that make sense?
And actually, I think if you go to 22.2B2, 22.2B2.
That's.
One of the, under the powers and duty sections, it says, "Hold public hearings notice of which shall be given in accordance with section 71312 of the ORC."
Yeah.
So.
What was the page number?
154. Yeah, which is, you know, a different thing than a site planner, right?
Right. Not because again, in that same sentence, it said that they don't have a public hearing, honestly.
Yeah, I almost felt like it was the emergency clause where, I'm not sure it's the best language because it sounds like you're trying to have a meeting without probably knowing about it, but that's not the case at all after Yvonne's point.
Right. I mean, just follow it out on what it's talking about, in conjunction with the review, the approval or disapproval. or disapproval of the site plan, it's not saying the meeting does not have to be noticed. I don't know.
Questions, concerns, comments?
Nope.
None?
Okay, we had a, um, Liz Fuller?
Yes.
What, what would be the reason why not having the public meeting at all?
Well, it would be a public meeting, uh, I mean, a public hearing, or it's, it's, you're not required to have a public hearing.
Yes, right.
Um, probably the main reason, I, I think you'll find in the next paragraph, when, when these start coming in, which would be wonderful, that I mean, we're having some good development go on. Planning commission, we only have thirty-five days to do that review and approval, I mean, this, this process has to keep flowing so we don't have development slow down, so it doesn't require a public hearing. Certainly, I, I think public, I think planning commission always has the option to do a public hearing if they so choose, but it's not going to be required over site plan. Any more questions on that?
And this passes legal muster, correct?
Absolutely.
This is pretty typical language for zoning codes.
Yes.
Alright.
Can I ask a question? Um, what is the public notice for when the planning commission decides to have such a meeting? Would the new code require them to give public notice that they're going to have a meeting, say?
To have a site plan review?
Yeah, say somebody drops something off and says, "I'd like a site plan review" and the public or the planning commission decides they're going to have a meeting for that. How much notice do they have to give the public that they're going to have that?
As a current posting requirement or?
Which is what, twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four hours, isn't it? If it's a public hearing, I believe, in my opinion, is it greater for a public hearing? That would probably have to be advertised.
But it's not, but that would be a hearing.
Depends on if the public hearing is.
Right, which is reading.
Is required, is there some things by statute or by the, uh, charter, if the public hearings have to be noticed X amount of days and time, but, you know, if they're going to go site plan review, they could schedule, whatever they please, then.
The regular notice.
So, we could have a major development going on, but the public only gets twenty-four hour notice that the site plan meeting is coming up.
Well, I think if you take a look at when the site plan reviews are required and I don't, you know, large development's going to go through, but they're going to have a lot more components, say, if these, you know, the quick in and out, I, a major development's not going to be reviewed probably in one night. That's what you're trying to.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to try to push something through in the, in twenty-four hours. It's just not proven.
Okay.
Moving on.
Um, alright, the, uh, we had a concern raised about the community building, comment that the school may have to sell the community building for money, uh, people would have to, would have no say on this and it would go to a private business and be lost to the public and would be out of our hands. Um, I was a little confused about this one because the building is, um,
It's a business.
It's not under our control right now, it is owned by the school district, correct?
And it's a business.
Um, and with the exception of, yeah, oversight through the zoning code, um, we really wouldn't have any control over their choice to, to sell. So, I don't.
Nor do we today.
Take that one.
Not right.
No, right.
Shopping center.
Right, the same as today. Um, yeah, specifically for the community building, it's not.
Ma'am.
Right now, it's in a what, an R one zoning district? So if it were to be sold, it can't be developed as a business in a R one, so it has protection. If it becomes part of the village center, which allows for business and office development, it doesn't have any protection, that it doesn't have to come to the public for variance. Right now, it would have to come for variance if they sold it to be developed into a business or office, correct?
Well, that's a change of use, that they have to come to us for zone change for their parcel if they want to do a business in there.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right now, they have to come to the village and as a village, we have some kind of say over that, so we have some control over the building right now. Because it can only be.
Well, like you said.
Control over potential, uh, potential future change of use at this point, that's true.
And, and again, not, you know, with oversight through zoning, whatever that zoning may be, that is our only control if there is.
But if you change it to village center, you've already said you're allowing business development, office development, that's allowable.
There are expanded uses on the village center, correct?
Right, so if they sell it to someone who wants to be a private business owner of that property, there's not a thing the village can say about it.
Well, if, if we kept it the same to the previous point, right now, it's, it is a business, it's not a change of the, of use. I mean, if it were.
No, it's a school, right now, it's a school, which is allowable in the R one.
It's conditional, it's a conditionally permitted use.
Right.
But if they sold it for residential, what's?
Or replace a worship.
If they, yeah, if they sold it for residential or sold it for church and somebody came with a bulldozer and tore it down, there's nothing you can do about it.
Right, but we have some control, at least if it's still R one, just to be in.
Control to just keep it residential or whatever.
Decision making.
Yeah, that's.
You know, I, I guess I don't understand why this is actually going on right now with her. Because we already made this point of, of reference of village center. So I think we should just continue on with what we're talking about. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay, um, additional comment that we have, a concern that, uh, our new code is perhaps discouraging lawyers and architects and, um, discouraging, uh, and encouraging, uh, babysitting. Um, I, you know, first, I know, no use can legally be excluded from any code. So we, we're certainly not attempting to exclude anybody and certainly not intended to be discouraging professionals. Um, for the, for the home occupations in the new code, a conditional use permit is only needed in the R one district. Okay, that is our most, that's our strictest district, you know, for, for residential and it's appropriate to any other types of uses, you know, to have a, a proper permit for going in that, that strictest of our residential districts. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, other areas that they, or will require the completion of a zoning certificate to ensure that whatever they're doing in your, how this is in compliance with our code.
So, sorry, go ahead.
Now, I understood what, uh, Mr. Adams explained to me about that part, about having a, uh, somebody babysitting your children and so forth and that's to have a permit for a sixteen-year or fourteen-year-old to do that, but how about if there's somebody that has, is an adult and has five or six kids and she's, she's taking care of in that place? Um, as an adult, we're not talking about the teenager occasional babysitting. Um, but that adult doesn't have to have a permit, does she? Because daycare is omitted from that.
Yeah, what, well, what I want to, if I could jump into the daycare quickly because, I mean, no, not quickly, but at this point in time.
Okay.
Um, our current code, do we give any definition of type A or type B? This is in, I'm trying to find here, nine point, uh, it's nine point four, page fifty-seven. Because the two types are drastically different in terms of what the impact they have on the community.
Okay.
So, um, the type B, uh, you know, you can read it for yourself, they're permitted as an accessory use in residential districts and do not require a zoning certificate, that would be for the smaller number of children.
It's one to six.
Yeah, correct. And then, thank you for providing that data. Um, the type A are the ones that do give the greater concern for a community, the impact on the community and, and because our current code doesn't, um, doesn't spell out the difference, doesn't define the two, doesn't set any criteria, at this point in time, we have no way of dealing with these. So, that's another good thing for our code, we've outlined, we've given definitions, we've defined where they can go, the criteria for putting that, the type A into, into an area.
For the type A, whatever it goes in the design area for them to be, they still don't have to have a permit?
No, they do, that one requires, and if you look closely at the criteria.
Nine point four A.
Okay.
You know, they require fencing, they will generate more parking, you know, uh, beginning to issues that'll slow down, so actually, by inserting this in, but we will have more control to prevent those.
But someone that would have a.
That we don't currently have.
Someone that would have a type B, we're still able to take care of children, one through six amount of children there without a permit, a certificate.
Right.
Up to six. Alright, to the question of the attorney or accountant, somebody that works from the house. Do you have to have a permit for that?
If it's in an R one, we're going to require that it's going to be considered a conditional use that you will need a permit for, correct? If it's in another zone, aren't you? Um, we're going to have a certificate of zoning certificates, so if we get a call from a neighbor, you know, what's going on in that house, we have something in the file that, that defines what's going on there. We'll know what's going on.
So what would be the process and procedure for an individual in an R one district to get this?
Then you should come in and build a conditional use permit application?
Mm-hmm.
That would go to the planning commission for approval. In an R one.
How will they, uh, know that this is, for the, um, happen to them?
We'll have to have an education.
I guess, maybe, maybe that's the part I missed earlier, um, so I, I didn't, you know, about the planning commission approving, what is their basis and guidelines?
Um, well, you get to the.
A permitted conditional uses in R one. So that would be chapter, uh, I'm going to do so many, right, ten. Home occupation, conditional use.
I, I guess.
So, you know, nine point one addresses home occupations. No other, no, no, first, none of the members of the family residing on the premises engaged in the occupation. Uh, home occupation clearly incidental and subordinate to its usage for residential or not, used more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of the building. No external operations, constructions or reconstruction of premises, uh, to accommodate the use. So I guess you can't run a garage out of your garage, raise the ceiling so you can put in the, and the business about traffic flow and outside storage and.
Okay, so if I can follow the process, um, someone comes and says, "Hey, I'm doing a business out of my home." It then goes to planning commission and then they measure against nine point one, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And something else?
Um, it also turns to page that when you get to the planning commission part, defines their role for this, page one fifty-five, twenty-two point two C. Got there? Okay, and then, um, a couple pages there will define, uh, the, most of the materials on one fifty-six are part of an application that could complete, right, and then again, D on page one fifty-seven outlines what, what will they actually be looking for when they're considering the conditional use permit.
And then, how often does a planning commission?
They stop, because they need to.
Okay.
Is there a fee, what, or what, what's a fee involved, there's probably an application fee, minimal?
Yeah.
Is that something that might have to get renewed annually or once you're in there?
Yeah, I don't think this is renewed, I actually would change, but I would, change of use perhaps, but not.
I like it, I don't think it's a deterrent, I think it's good that it, it helps to put parameters on it so that something doesn't get out of hand.
I understand that, but I, I still have a hard time comprehending that somebody that's doing that needs the permit and someone that still is on the part B of their child care has one through six children there and doesn't have to have a permit.
I think one through six, my wife babysits, I, I mean, we have three kids in our house. And I don't, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, if I had six kids versus three kids, it, it wouldn't change my house any. I don't love that it changes a lot. I think the, the reason is, if you're an accountant and you've got a steady flow of traffic to your house.
Honestly, I don't think this really, I, even though I have accountants and lawyers who are caught in it yet, but I think this is more for, Joe the woodworker, for example. Or somebody else that might be doing something that, you know, I guess if there was a saw running all day in the neighbor's garage.
Yeah, like a remodeler and there's all kinds of scrap material in the yard and. Yeah, and I think the babysitting is the exception because it's such, um, so many people, hey, I'm running to work, you know, it, it's about the,
It's more common.
Being accommodating for your neighbor, I think is.
I'm just having a problem, I'm having a problem with the, say, inequality of that.
That's what I mean, I think.
I guess I'm not saying.
I think babysitting is the only exception because of that, it's because it is so common and it's more about all, all the kids, my wife babysits her people up in the village. It's one that's around the corner and it's, it's, hey, I gotta go to work and you watch me for an hour, get him on the bus.
It, it's more about drawing a line between babysitting and daycare, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not allowing a daycare, but, and I think that's where the, the, the difference is. If you've got more than six, eh, it looks like, smells like a daycare and we're not allowing that.
Well, we're allowing it as a conditional use with the, all the appropriate stuff.
So no one would be held up if they got their application in through planning commission and they, I mean, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, they basically, they, they mean things, planning mission sort of directed the site ego.
Is this once in a lifetime or is it every five years or how would they have to handle that?
We're just, uh, mentioning that unless they change what they're doing at their business, it's a long time.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to require a renewal, it's not that it is. Could seem to suck.
Okay, then. Look at, um, look at section F.
Oh, twenty-two what?
Twenty-two F.
What page did you want?
Twenty-two what F?
Twenty-two.
Two point two F.
Page one fifty-eight, is that?
Uh, I got a different, uh.
Yeah, um, it's one fifty-eight, I'm on it.
Period of literally.
Okay.
At the end of the year.
That's what I was, yeah.
Oh, that's, from this mention of the cultivation of a structure style.
Yeah, I might. Cause that's all on conditional use, yeah.
Name is. Same person restricted, uh, one fifty-eight.
Yeah, I need a little time to look at that, that almost sounds like it's rigorizing, uh, construction, uh, something.
Well, I think it's kind of foolish to have an annual, to go through this process on an annual basis. I'd be a little nervous about doing it every five years, but. And can, can you just do it?
Yeah.
Is that, that's something that I have issues with.
I think Yvonne's right, I think the intention was for the, if you're building something and, and you can't build this, you don't get the permit for indefinitely, ten years.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, cause when you think when we were going through the different uses, all of different things that can be conditional, it's section probably relates to those, but I'll do clarification for us.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, cause the, the, I guess I could see some of the conditional uses making that an issue.
Yeah, certainly.
Use for home occupation hardly seems like one of them. And if we had to call that out as a, as a one-time deal or a, or a.
Time unless the circumstances change.
Yeah, the, the, you know, that happens. Yeah, that, that, that seems to be a reasonable addition to the, or change, okay, nicely done.
Absolutely.
Nicely done. All right, anything else?
Uh, no, I, I do want to, yes, sorry, that's it for the, the different, um, comments that I wanted to, reactions to comments that we've heard, but I, I do want to comment on something that we've heard nothing about, and that's our new chapter eighteen, which involves the historic piece, um, incorporates a process for, if we intend to designate local historic buildings or districts, that is the chapter that outlines that process, so...
Well, and also to clarify, when we were talking, Ivan and I were talking about an overlay, it wasn't necessarily a historic overlay. I guess, um, we can have an overlay through the corridor, and you have certain expectation that signage goes and everything, so... I, I didn't realize that, I mean, I guess overlay is a pretty broad term used a lot in different ways.
Um, but again, this one outlines how we, how we would go about, uh, design maybe a specific district. So if we intend to, um, it, it is not essential that we have it in place for the historic landmark designation that we're working on, but if we wanted to get, um, estate designation and be eligible for funding that they have, then this is certainly going to be an important piece of that, um, to head someplace. So I wanted to point that out. Haven't heard any comments about that, so, thought I would comment on it. And, now that's all I have.
All right, did you look at, did you look at the O L R parking lot playground?
Uh, yes, and actually, I thought I was going to remove that section.
We made an amendment, and we deleted, um, the, uh, part C and moved D into C.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I took your advice of amendment, and it worked, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Mr. Hawker, you seem to have a handful of papers.
It's new business.
Excellent, bring it on.
Okay, uh, it, I, I didn't get a chance to complete these forms that we normally do for design and beautification, but, uh, and I met with Joel Sawes, and he's excited to get the golf course in shape, and there's, you know, part of our group is trying to help that, um, come together. So I've got a couple sheets that, my pattern hopefully is to pass the ideas that we're looking at doing from a design and beautification standpoint by you guys, to make sure everything that we're looking at is, you're comfortable with. So I've got, and filled it up.
And still has any?
Yes. And so on, on that particular one is the, it shouldn't be in my copy, but, uh, there's that overgrown shrub that's there, it blocks the view, it's very similar to what we did with the common, uh, area, where we trimmed, you know, those bushes and opened up the view to see the community building. Uh, it looks like a small nuclear explosion over there. Uh, and Joel had no, no problem of us taking that out, and we would like to take that out and open it up, open up the view, and if poss, you know, if we still feel we need something, maybe we'll consider planning something there meanwhile, but, uh, it...
It's too much, it's too much to trim back, and...
It's a monster.
Everybody's got that, you know, tractor, I guess the skid steer loader probably yanked that by that, or...
It's not that... No, no, we, the only thing I thought of is, we were going to, you know, we don't want to tear up the golf course area around there, so I thought maybe a chainsaw and then get down to the roots and...
Okay, you were going to herb it, that would be...
Maybe, I should have, um...
It's just that applied, be careful, baby.
I should have put on there minimally evasive removal of the bush. The, the goal is not to make a mud pit. Yeah, that's a good thing, too, um, if there's irrigation and I need to talk to Mike about that, you...
We don't need any irrigation.
Okay. I didn't know that. Well, I'm a step ahead of those people in Green Hills who didn't know, of course. Okay, any, um, any issue with us removing that bush?
It's done, yeah, done, so, I think it's, uh, it's Greg's bush, we'll bring it to your house when it's finished.
That's where the EU goes.
Careful when you cut it down, or it might be balls in there.
I'm glad you didn't say bones, very different, you know.
Bones, I didn't hear.
Um, this here is right around the corner, um, actually, this...
You can see the bush.
Yeah, you can see the bush, maybe we, if your attention's...
Same picture.
Right, if your attention is on the bush, uh, maybe you won't notice the rotting rail or the missing rails.
I see it, I see it.
But this whole, this whole corner, I mean, if we're going to, even if we have to borrow from another part of the fence to move newer rails up here, I know they're not terribly expensive. This one's about ready to go, and then this one's missing a couple rails. Again, uh, one thing that was interesting that Joel brought up, uh, is that he did a survey that he had read about golf courses and saying, what is it that draws you back to a golf course? And, uh, it was surprising, it was how you're greeted, it's almost like the Walmart greeter, how you were greeted, and the entryway of when you first saw the golf course. Now, I happen to believe that if there was no golf course beyond that, I'm sure that none of that stuff would count. I think there might be an association of, wow, someone greets me, or I, I talk to somebody with a smile, and it's a nice entryway, and it's the gateway to a good day of fun. Um, well, that's what we're trying to do, is clean this up here, uh, by replacing those rails if we can.
How many rails need to be replaced?
I would say probably, um, about ten rails would do it.
How many posts?
Um, I didn't...
Are any of them brought down?
Yeah, the corner one and, and, I was, well, let me, let me go through this again, there's, um, six. More, more like, um, fourteen rails that need to be replaced. And I would say, um, five posts.
That need to be replaced?
Yes.
You're talking about just the offset part there, right?
When you say the offset, no, well, even these over here, the one in the corner is rotten, and the two, this is missing rails.
What do you think about just taking out that whole corner?
Well, we had talked about that, and Joel and I, and then I guess the feedback was it was a preventative measure to stop people from driving onto the golf course, which, we like that idea of not having to drive on the golf course. So, the, the only other thought I had is, I don't think it's too expensive to do this portion of it, and if we decide later that we want to have an either landscaping or something else that prevents that from happening, um, I kind of, I backed off once, because I, we talked about removing the bushes and the railing going up there, because you're kind of corralled up to the caddy shack and...
And that's all right, but fence, you know, these, these split rail fences have a fine life, and they just need to be replaced after a while, so...
So...
It's a lot of work with a tamer, and you'll feel it there and there.
I have a post holding.
All that, that you guys talked about, I would be all for eliminating, and I think landscaping might be a good idea. I would really, it would be much more powerful, I mean, than pop, yeah, it's a pop.
And just, just so you know, because we'll get to some more sheets here, um, we're trying, for Tree City USA, we're, you know, and I know that Mike's stepping in and helping a lot on this as well, um, we're trying to do a bunch of other things, too. And I, I just, if I was weighing it, I think...